To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can remain standing, please. Since for a moment of silence for our military, men and women, police officers, first responders, that pay the ultimate sacrifice for their community and the country, so we will join you.
May I have roll call, please?
Roll call, council member Baptista.
Present.
Council member Aguilar.
Present.
Council member King.
Present.
Mayor Protemp Garcia.
President.
Mayor Samra.
Present.
For the record, council members, Mayor Protemp and Mayor are in attendance.
Thank you. Close session announcements. First of all, council member King, even though there was no financial conflict of interest, recused himself from the Livingston Police Officers Association bargaining portion. And then other than that, there were no reportable actions. Direction was given to staff. Changes to the agenda, council, staff, any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing no one requesting changes, we'll move on to awards, presentations, and proclamations. Item number one, this is the introduction of the new police volunteer Gordon Wilkinson by Chief Ruben Chavez. Gordy, you're out of uniform. At least the one I'm used to seeing going.
Well, he puts in a lot of time, but he has to take some time off so he can enjoy. So anyways, it's an honor to introduce one of our police volunteers. As you know, volunteers are just an important part of any organization. They help us in many different ways. And Gordon joins us, and he will be assigned a Ford Ranger pickup, which I believe our mayor drove about 15 years ago.
Well, thanks for putting the timestamp to it.
It runs good.
You could've said sometime ago.
So anyways, Gordon was born in Ventura, California. He moved to Oxnard, California until he was about five, at which time he moved to Atwater. And he went through the school system at Atwater, graduating from Atwater High School, Gulf Falcons. And then went to college, Merced College. We graduated with an AA degree in criminal justice. And then went on to get his bachelor's degree in fire administration in 1971 from Indiana Northern University. If you guys don't know where the little college is, it's a small college just outside of Gas City, Indiana. And Gas City is like less than 5,000 people. So I did look it up. But anyways, he got his bachelor's degree in fire science. And I think that's where he probably developed a love for fire because he ended up becoming a fire volunteer. In 1967, he worked as a seasonal firefighter, volunteer firefighter, which I believe he worked in this county as well, relief fire dispatcher, fire dispatcher, until 1972 when he went over to work for Cal Fire. He worked many, many assignments for Cal Fire all throughout the state, different assignments, doing different, you know, jobs which required expertise. And he finally retired in 2017, retiring as a fire captain with Cal Fire. 2015, he joined the Atwater Police Department as a volunteer and was there for a couple of years. We were able to snag him recently to come over to Livingston where he'll be serving as a volunteer here for the city of Livingston. He's married, has a wife of sixteen years, Julie, and three grown children, Jill, Jenny, and Brandy, and has two grandchildren. And Gordon is still very active, not only in the Merced County but Atwater. He still runs the Fourth of July Race, the Race for Independence in Atwater. And he's also on the board for the Fourth of July Committee in Atwater. And he's also the president of a race, I don't remember, Running Club, Merced Running Club. And so if you can't tell, he's probably a long-distance runner here. So, used to be. So we're just honored to have him here. And I can tell you right now, he's got a heart to serve the community. I've seen him out there helping clean things up, and he takes a lot of notes on different things to help sure, to make sure that we keep our city clean and safe. So I'd like to welcome Gordon Wilkinson to the Police Department and give him one of our challenge coins from the Police Department, which has our three values on it. And welcome to the PD. Thank you, Gordon.
So Chief, which badge does he have?
Is it V2? V2.
You're in good company.
Were you?
I'll start out with Victor II as well, so. Yeah, so. But I quickly got promoted by taking the Victor I badge, so keep an eye out, okay? So see a lane on the table, pick it up and put it on, nobody knows.
He did say his goal is to be a volunteer longer than you were, so, no, I'm just kidding.
You've got a long way to go then.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, don't go away.
Okay.
So Market Match is, this picture that we see on the right, is sort of this incentive program that is funded through the state. And the closest farmers market that has that from here is Modesto's Farmers Market. So there's a, we have a big need to sort of apply and get that here. Because what it essentially does is if I go to a farmer's market and spend $10 in my EBT or food stamps, the market can match $10. So it's doubling my purchasing power. And farmers markets who end up getting this incentive program see their sales for EBT skyrocket, usually anywhere between 300 to 600 percent, in fact. So it's a pretty big, great thing to have. And I think, I think in terms of infrastructure and certification, that's sort of the only thing that's left for the market to obtain, to become really a gold standard. So I think this is the most interesting slide from the presentation. This is sales data between 2017 and 2018. And I want to highlight how much the market has grown. So these numbers are reported from the farmers. And if we look at WIC, Women, Infants, and Children's Program, has done a really good job of helping us in terms of bringing out staff to the market and actually distributing vouchers, instead of having to go to the WIC office and get the voucher from there, which sometimes lowers the redemption rates. So they've worked overtime and they've used volunteers to actually come out to the market and pass out these $20 vouchers throughout the summer, which is why we see the sales in 2017 were $1,915, 2018 they were $6,120. So it's a huge, significant increase. The WIC fruit and vegetable checks were still struggling a little bit. It is pretty low overall, but we do have a pretty significant difference as well. And the reason for that is because these checks are a little bit more difficult for farmers to process, and just not as popular, but they are year-round, instead of just the summer. So that's definitely an alternative we need to tap into. Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program vouchers, which is distributed by the Area of Agency on Aging, we also see quite a, it's almost about doubling, from 544 to 1196. Now CalFresh SNAP is one area that's kind of been disappointing, because we did do that mass mailing of 6,500 flyers, and we only saw that, I think it's like a 250 percent increase, but it's still pretty low. Which is why I think Market Match would be, Market Match is what would really get that up. Cash reporting was not available for 2017, but it was 3862 for 2018. And so the total, we see 2501, changing to 11,377, within one year. And for, for an area with a population of about 14,000, that's very impressive, I think. So some challenges and solutions, which are also highlighted on this little one pager. So my background is in human biology. So when I started this work in 2017, it was all kind of new. But there's something that I kind of quickly picked up, and it's this, this kind of paradox. You know, we're in central California, where we're in a very agriculturally rich area, yet we have all these food deserts. So I was thinking to myself, what's going on? And this is sort of like a conceptual model I've created, that I think kind of explains this. And this is not unique just to Merced County or central California. This is, this actually kind of occurs in most places that are agriculturally rich. So we have an agriculturally rich area with many farmers. It's not profitable for farmers to sell locally. Farmers export their products to other counties or countries. We end up having inadequate amount of fruits and vegetables, increased food deserts. Sort of, it sort of makes sense, but it's fundamental, and the question is, what can you really do about that? I don't think there is much to do about it, but understanding it sort of could help us come up with alternatives to work around it. Because this is sort of a very set structure. So some, some challenges here and potential solutions. It's tempting for farmers to drive two hours to the bay and sell their produce for a lot more than they can here. So I think farmer retention has been kind of difficult. One way we could get around that is waiving their boot fees and providing training and certification opportunities, which the, I think the market manager has been pretty good about doing that. He's been able to recruit some mong farmers and kind of, you know, work with them and sort of build that trust and relationship. But, but that is, that has been a pretty difficult challenge, and it's a challenge for farmers markets across the county. Residents may not prioritize using CalFresh EBT vouchers or cash at farmers markets. They may not think it's worth their while. They might, they may want to spend those dollars elsewhere. But, you know, if you have something like Market Match, or like that kids market event that doubles your sort of purchasing power, they may change their mind. And just more promotion and marketing requires multi-agency collaboration and prioritization. I think another challenge, which just like anything else is funding, right? How do we keep something sustainable? So this Farmers Market Promotion Program grant is, is not forever. It's for three years, and it is going to end this year. So we, we need to kind of think about, if there is a cost, how do we, how do we generate revenue and, and keep it going? So markets typically do fundraising events, charge boot fees once they've established a relationship with farmers, and agency collaboration to sort of come up with ways to fund. For example, First Five, the City of Livingston, the Health Department, if, you know, they all collaborate, we end up with these events that, that end up benefiting the community. Another thing is entertainment. So I've kind of been to a few farmers markets around the state, like the Sacramento one, the Mona Modesto, and a few in the Bay Area. Very difficult to compare to this area. There's a lot of differences, right, to keep in mind. But what I've, what I've tended to notice that can be applicable here is, and what we've started doing this a little bit, holiday-themed events. So like the Modesto Certified Farmers Market, you know, they bring out like these balloon for kids during Christmas time, and kind of have those decorations. A lot of markets have live bands, so if that's possible, tailored to the community and what the interest of the community is, having a sort of variety of music. And so, a few of the lessons learned, I mentioned the first one, but we obviously realized the 6,500 flyers that we mailed out was not really an effective way to outreach. So door-to-door outreach and text messaging is a lot more effective. In fact, that's, that's one of the reasons why WIC has done so well, is because they do send out personal text messages to their recipients. And that's something we're trying to work with the county to get to do at CalFresh EBT, because they currently don't have that system. But it, but it, you know, in this day and age, a lot of people have phones, and then that's sort of more effective than just getting a one-time flyer. Four-hour farmers markets may be too long. That's another suggestion that's been brought up. The market currently, well, actually, I think the opening day is this Thursday, and it runs from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. The fair might be a good time for that, but the market, it might be a little too long for the farmers, and we could sort of get more feedback to see what people think. I've, I've mentioned the Market Match increasing CalFresh sales and committed funding. Yeah. I think that is my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience at this time, public? If not, council, any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four. This is a presentation by Jasprit Gaur and Deep Singh. Please come forward and... Yeah, they should be right there.
By the way, I'm very appreciative of both of you being here.
Yes.
And thank you again.
Thank you.
Sasri Kal, hello everyone. My name is Jasprit Gaur, and I'm the Community, 209 Area Community Organizer for the Jagada Movement.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nandip Singh. Just wanted to thank you to the, to the city council, to the mayor, and to city manager Ramirez for, for giving us this opportunity, and of course, to the city member, the community of Livingston, to give us an opportunity to share a resource that we hope to make available to, to the city, and to tell you a little bit about the history of this organization, the Jagada Movement, specifically here in Livingston, what the things we've been doing, what the things we're hoping to do, and ways that hopefully we can partner up. So quickly, what, what exactly is the Jagada Movement? So the Jagada Movement is an organization that really focuses on the youth. We do it in three different ways, whether that be youth leadership, youth engagement, and youth empowerment. And if you need a testimony to that, if I could actually quickly acknowledge all of our youth members that are here, actually in the audience today. We have members here from Livingston High School, from UC Merced, from Merced College. And really, that's sort of the ethos that we want, is to really push community to give back, especially those that grew up here in Livingston, and really to become part of the community in all different ways, whether that be in terms of the educational opportunities they have, but really to create opportunities for their other residents here as well. What is our history? So we started this organization actually back in 2000. And to take us down memory lane, actually, one of our founding board members, who is actually now a physician, born and raised here in Livingston, finished his medical degree at UC Davis, will probably punch me after I, after I finish acknowledging him later. But, but Dr. Simran Clare is an example of a person who, you know, really was born and raised in this community and found a way to sort of give back. And as a founding board member, that's sort of the ethos that we hope to transmit even to our young members today. We incorporated it as a 501(c)(3) in 2009. We started actually programs at Livingston High School, which we continue up to today, and Jasprit will share more about that, back in 2014. In fact, our inaugural class, including our first president and vice presidents are, are sitting in our audience, as well as where we've created sort of the inaugural year of our SIC Honors and Service Society, which is a club that's currently, has weekly meetings at Livingston High School.
Okay, so as Deep mentioned, we do have a presence currently at Livingston High School. Some of our officers are here today. And some of the things that we do, so we do primarily focus with the youth, and we have different types of community service opportunities, whether that be through like homeless feedings, or park beatifications, or tree planting opportunities, or even like collaborating with different initiatives locally, along with different learning opportunities and leadership development. So one of the things I really want to highlight today is our different civic engagement opportunities. So the first area is with healthy families. In the past, you know, we've done a lot of different types of town halls, focusing on different topics such as alcoholism, bullying, patriarchy. And we really want to start bringing those types of conversations into the city of Livingston, and, you know, really seeing what does the community have to say about that? What is, what do our youth have to say about that? What are the, some of the changes our youth wants to, you know, begin to see in our community? And really, what kind of future it is that they want to build here in Livingston moving forward? And then I'll let Deep talk a little bit about the next.
So, so I get to wear two turbans in this room, or two hats, but in my case, like I said, two turbans. One is as Executive Director of the Jagada Movement, but I'm also a school board trustee for Central Unified in Fresno County, in the city of Fresno. And I wanted to share quite a bit about certain sort of educational opportunities and engagement that we're doing, even with Merced Unified and the local school boards. We're piloting a literacy program in Fresno Unified, around the Punjabi language program. And specifically Livingston High has always been one of the schools that has, was one of the first actually in the state to implement a Punjabi language program. But at the same time, parents still continue to give us feedback, that while they're extremely grateful for the Punjabi language elective, still forms of translations, interpretations, especially for newer immigrant families, they oftentimes, there's still a, a gap that's still missing there, whether that be, and I know Chief Chavez has specifically really recruited sick police officers, but oftentimes, we still have that, that language, especially for newer immigrants, that, that still comes up. And even at the elementary school, we continuously, even here in Livingston, get cases of bullying that occurs, and sometimes they feel that certain school, certain school officials don't always know how to handle that, in a sort of a sensitive manner. So that's something that we're looking to also continue to build out our programs here in, well, in Merced Unified in general, but specifically here in the city of Livingston.
And other areas are, you know, creating greater engagement in the community in Livingston. We've had our presence at the, at the Sweet Potato Festival, at the local farmers market. And then also last fall, we did like, it was more heavily focused on voter registration. So we've had our booths at the local gordware, and we've registered more of our community members to vote. City of Livingston does have a lot to offer, so we want to, you know, start increasing our engagement in different, in different local events, and getting our, you know, youth more involved there. And then with our policy engagement and advocacy, I know like last summer, we were, we had a lot of our students engaged at the state capitol. We were lobbying for Bill AB 3179. And then with our next, AB 1531, with Greater Language Access, I'll let Deep talk a little bit about that.
So what, what this was is, just to share, so really, from the, from the school board level to this city council, all the way to the state capitol in, in Sacramento, oftentimes there are a lot of things that many other language groups take for granted. Since 1990, a census error actually miscategorized the Punjabi language. So while the city of Livingston has always known far more about the Punjabi language, in most parts of the Central Valley, where Punjabi has now become the third most spoken language after English and Spanish, and throughout the state, this fact hasn't been recognized. So we've been working to actually speed up determinations, so that the Punjabi language is recognized, and at least in the Census 2020 going forward, that this will be resolved, and where there have been language translation, interpretation gaps for the last 30 years, that some of this can actually start to be filled. That takes me to the sort of next phases, there to, and this is where we really hope to partner with the city of Livingston. So there were five groups, and we're part of that coalition of five groups, that were given the state contract to do Census 2020 work in this area. And so we will be going canvassing, phone banking, and really being sort of the, the group on the ground, especially here in the city of Livingston, making sure that all communities, all people in the area, make sure they participate in Census 2020, because so much of, from everything from redistricting to police money to sidewalks, oftentimes follows the data that comes from census engagement. And so this will be a huge part of our, our focus. In the pictures, you'll see some of our students even here in the audience that were, whether they were doing voter registration or doing community service. Finally, like I said, we just want to be a resource to the city of Livingston. We have a lot, a number of different initiatives. We work in 12 counties throughout the state, but really, our focus is in the Central Valley, from Kern County up to Sutter County, really that belt from Bakersfield up to Yuba City. This is sort of the community that we service. We have about 10 staff members that work full-time on creating different opportunities for our youth, but really, in, in the hopes of creating a better future for all of us, especially in the Central Valley together. Thank you so much for your time. I'll, I'll leave our cards with those of you at the dais, and really hope to get an opportunity, whether it be through the question and answer, or even afterward, to really be an asset and a resource for all of our communities, but especially as one that's as close to home as Livingston.
Okay, thank you. Does the public have any questions for Mr. Singh or Ms. Gaur? If not, I just want to thank you guys for everything that you do. I am aware of what you guys do, you know? But I'm also glad that you're involved in the Census 2020. It's going to be very crucial, not only to Livingston, but as a state. We know, we don't want to get into what's going on in Washington DC, but it's very important that we count every person here. And we need to put that fear or that hesitation aside from saying, hey, this is just a number, no one's going to know. So I'm glad, it's very important, so I'm glad you guys would be involved. So, thank you. And I think Mr. Ramirez has a question. Mr. Ramirez?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to take a quick moment to just acknowledge and recognize the great work that you guys are doing across the valley. It was, it was, it was an honor for me to be able, I actually serve on the Central Valley Community Foundation Core Advisory Group, and, and actually, your organization, you know, applied for funding, and I was very happy to advocate for funding for your organization because of the outstanding work that you guys have been doing. And I would like to see your organization continue to grow and prosper, and thrilled that, that we're doing, that we're going to partner up, and that we're going to be doing more for, of course, our city here, but also for the region. So thank you very much again for coming.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to announcements and reports.
Thank you. There we go. Whoops. I personally wanted to thank Gordon Spencer. On my towing days, I did towing for about 15 years, and I worked with the Police Department and also with the Fire Department. And Mr. Gordon Wilkinson was always great in regards to being supportive of, you know, we would go after, when there was an accident, there was always, you know, the Fire Department was always helpful in, in helping us clean up the, you know, the debris and all that, and to make sure that we were safe in an accident on the freeway, and as well as the Police Department, to make sure that, that everybody was, was kept safe after an accident. So I want to thank him for all his years and his continued support of, of this community, and then, you know, of course, that water as well. So just, you know, just, he's, he's always been great, so thank you. I will be having a, a town hall meeting in the town of Planata. I'm still waiting for my shirt from the mayor for Livingston, so, you know, hopefully you're making some for Livingston, right?
Okay, okay.
With a new logo on there.
Thank you.
And a town hall on May 15th at 6:00 p.m., if anybody would like to go there. And also, on May 16th in South Merced, we'll be having also a representative from the Gang Task Force at both events, to talk about gangs and, and what they're doing in regards to all around the county. It will be for the Merced Gang Task Force. And this weekend, Planata will be having a Planata Community Day. It's a small town on the east side of the county, still unincorporated, but they're proud of, of the Planata community. And also attended the state legislative action days last month and at the end of the month, and Governor Newsom was there to speak to us, as well as Attorney General Javier Vizera, who came to our supervisor's Latino caucus meeting, and just talked to us a little bit about what he was doing, you know, in regards to the new laws that, that came to effect at the beginning of the year, and also others that he's handling. I also attended the next, the next day after that, those legislative action days. I went, had to go back to Stockton and attended the San Joaquin Valley Rail Committee meeting, along with Supervisor McDaniel. And so they're, the Amtrak or Valley Rail group are, they want to start a Saturday service from, you know, two, two trains, Saturday service, because we're currently, there's not. And so they want to, you know, that goes down all the way from, from Sacramento all the way to, to Bakersfield. Also too, they want to start a, a three-way, three-way bus program that starts in, coming off from Sac, from Bakersfield, but that one, that one will be going from, from Madera to San Jose. As the train comes up from the south, they usually go all the way to Manteca later up, and then go around and all the way to Bay Area, but to get around that, they have to, they want to, obviously, they want to start a, a bus program that would just, you know, start in Madera, and take 152 through Los Bando's and all the way to, to, to the Bay Area. That would cut off about almost two hours of people's time, so. But for the, in order for them to do that, they, there's a bill that's going to be on the state legislature regarding changing the rule, because currently, if you're on the train, you can take the three-way bus system, like what I did when I went to China, I had, I took the train from, from here to LAX, but, you know, we had to take the bus all from, from Bakersfield all over the gray line down to LA. And but right now, the public cannot take, get on the, on the three-way bus, because of the rules that were set, you know, years ago. So they have to push that bill in order for, for the three-way bus program to go from Madera to Bay Area. And so the, the RFPs, we voted, the county board supervisors, we voted to go out for an RFPs for the third phase of the campus parkway expansion. And so that, that will be out, and hopefully, because we need to expend those funds that was received from the state, I think by 2020, if I'm not mistaken. And also, I've been getting calls regarding the campus parkway. It's, you know, I spent about two hours today regarding issues with the, with the right-of-way campus parkway and farmers. So there's always issues, always on 140 as well, with the expansion of the roads there, and, and so they're having issues there as well. And almost at the end of the meeting, I addressed the revenue sharing agreement with Livingston, and I told them that Livingston still needed a revenue sharing agreement since 2008. We haven't had one. Been, we've been, since I was mayor, and all this time, I've been almost, I'm going on my third year as supervisor, and we still don't have one. We're the only city without revenue sharing agreement. That means we can't expand our, you know, our sphere here in the city, and we're almost out of development land in the community, so. And I think that after the meeting, the CEO of the county expressed that he had already an agreement, so I think he sent it to, to Jose and the committee, right?
We have received it, but we haven't had a chance to...
Yeah, I think he did that today, so I got a copy of that, so, just want to express that. You know, I know that the public was asking about it, so. We're definitely there, hopefully, it's all there, what the, you know, Livingston is requesting and, and this there, so. And hopefully, it'll be back on to the agenda for the board supervisors to approve at the next board meeting on the 21st. And also, we, today, we voted, not we, but the board supervisors had a meeting, we had a meeting, and they voted no on hemp. I was the only one that, they kept hemp on there. There was a ban on marijuana, but hemp is, people were able to grow it, and, but I guess they, they wanted to do a 45-day moratorium, and I voted no on that. And I know former council member Alex McCabe was there frustrated, because the majority of the board voted, there had to be a four-fifths vote, and they voted four, four out of five, so. That was it, so, unless there's any other questions from the council?
I just wanted to say, Supervisor, first of all, like I said, we said we'd have received a proposal. We're going to review it, but we do want to acknowledge that there's finally some movement, and hopefully, there's things in there that we can, everything is there that we can work on. And, and Mr. Agler and I will be, once we review it, we'll be contacting the county to see where we can go from here. And hopefully, it won't take too much longer now. I do see some movement, so hopefully it holds.
Yes. Because I know that some farmers around the community have complained about, you know, when's, when are we going to do the general plan, and, and once we have the agreement with the county, so. Right, thank you. Any questions from the public? So, thank you very much.
If not, I believe Mr. Agler has...
Quick question. Are you going to have a town hall meeting in Livingston?
Probably next year. I didn't have one in, in Legrande, they asked me to, but I told them since, you know, I come to the meetings every two weeks over here, but I was planning on probably having meetings, setting up a meeting like from 6:00 to 7:00 before the council meetings here. So I'm going to address that one and, and put it public, that I'll be here every two weeks from 6:00 to 7:00, just in case anybody has any question. But next year, for sure, I will, I would have one in Livingston, so, thank you.
Okay. And once again, I want to thank you for your assistance in helping to move this forward.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, going to staff announcements and reports, recreation, Ms. Benoit?
Good evening, everyone. Just have a couple of things to report. As you may have already known or signed up for... already known or signed up for, we have our first annual Splash of Color run this Saturday. We are well over eight hundred entrants that have paid. We can only take a thousand, so we've got about a hundred and forty-eight slots left. We are really excited. We are hurting for volunteers, so if you can give a few hours, I need somebody to help throw color at people. It's a fun, easy job. Plan to get your hands dirty, but...
I'd like to volunteer the five council members here.
I'm taking their names down now. So, it's pretty exciting to see how that has just developed in three months into this wonderful thing that's great to bring our community together. Our farmer's market does start this Thursday. We want to invite everybody out. We open at five o'clock and close at nine, but let's kick off the season and support our farmers market. Swim team started today, so we've got a little over fifty kids, which is amazing. If, I'll let you guys know when our swim meets are, so you can come and watch what we have here in Livingston. We have a couple of things. One, you're probably going to talk about the scholarship. Okay, so I won't say anything about that. But I do want to bring up, we are coming to an end of this rec commissions, like everybody came on at the same time. So, I did want to just plant a little seed that, and Juan may talk a little bit more about this too when he comes up. But, you know, this commission has done a lot of different things and really have rolled their sleeves up to, you know, get little guys done and to support some programs at the school. And they're really out there in the community. And I am hoping that maybe we can talk about extending their terms to four years because even working on this grant, they would like to see it through. And so, it also makes it tough when you just get everybody, you know, you meet once a month and you get everybody kind of in the groove and then their term's up. So, I'm hoping that we can bring something back to council to discuss the possibility of extending their terms. So, soccer signups are coming up. Watch our LED board out here as well as banners around and see what's, when those registrations are. We also have our music and memorial park series start in Monday night. We had about a hundred and seventy-five folks out there digging the rhythm blenders. Rita's came and served ice cold custard. I think that the Knights of Columbus set a world record for the number of hot dogs that they sold on Monday night. So, if you haven't done that yet, bring your lawn chair out and enjoy local entertainment. It's really worth it.
Just for the record, Johnny Be Good was the first song.
There you go.
I tried to turn the power off unless they played that first, so. Or at least cry, you know, so. One of them worked. So...
Questions, anyone?
Let me ask the public. Public, any questions for Recreation? Council? Mr. Agler, are you got your...
Yeah, once the Battle of the Badges softball game...
Can I do believe that I didn't say anything about that? Our Guns and Hoses annual event will happen on May eighteenth. Game time is six o'clock. I'm sure both sides have been working out, ready for this game.
Don't look at the arrows.
I saw a lot of officers working out at the fire department's pancake breakfast, so.
Just another quick question. I don't know if you talked about it in a prior meeting, but you want to talk a little bit about the last community group meeting we had regarding the grant on April twenty-fifth? Did you talk about that before?
I haven't, but I sure can. And Jose, feel free to, as you folks may know, we have applied, or we are in the process of applying for Prop sixty-eight, which would fund a new recreation, much, much needed center here in town. A dream come true for many of us. And so, one of the requirements of this grant is that we have community input. So, we were on our third engagement, our third meeting to where members of the community have come together and just given input on what we really need here and what their feelings are about it. And it was really incredible to sit in a room of twenty-five or thirty people and even though we're from different walks and what our, you know, what our likes and dislikes as far as sports and family activities, whatever, but everybody was on the same page as far as knowing what we needed for our city, which was really, really encouraging. So, we are actually getting ready to go into our fourth engagement. That will be May, what, seven days prior to May twenty-third?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. So, the sixteenth, we will be having another meeting here. Everyone is invited. We will be taking all of the items that we have selected to go into our building and try to figure out how with the space that we have, put the puzzle together. So, you know, if...
You might want to mention what some of those spaces, so that way the public knows kind of what's being tossed out there.
Sure. So, we looked at having a gymnasium and feel free, those of you that were at the meeting, to remind me, like a dance room where, you know, we could have ballet and jazz and those kinds, a classroom for arts. I think we asked for a commercial kitchen.
Basketball court, courts, lounge, lounge room.
Lounge area.
The kitchen, commercial kitchen, bathrooms, barbecue, pits, shade, tables, wifi.
So, if you want to know more, come to our meeting and check it out.
Yeah, so we have the opportunity to apply up to eight million dollars. So, the goal is to try to get as much as that money possible, given the space that we've identified for this grant. And we're a little different than some other municipalities because typically they are always looking for outdoor recreation. And we are looking at both because we're looking at indoor and outdoor and our indoor has to equal our outdoor. So, we're working our numbers and playing with our space to make that happen and put, and then have our grant writer put together the best application possible so that we can, you know, go after that fund.
So, one other thing that I did want to just give you a quick update on is the mural, where we're at with our mural over here on the side of the building. As you know, Hernatus Laughing volunteered to fix the building so that it would provide us with a mural of great longevity, patching up the holes, putting a smooth surface for the artist to paint on. And we've been fighting rain. So, finally, we're getting ready. So, you're going to start seeing Hoel out there here pretty soon, putting some paint brushes to the wall. So, it's pretty exciting.
So, that's just for the public's, you know, knowledge is this is part of a bigger, comprehensive effort that started several years ago by our council actually adopting and putting together a mural ordinance and adopting a, the mural district in this downtown area to spur economic development, to bring more people from other areas. Hopefully, one day we'll have, you know, thirty or forty murals and then we'll have tour buses coming through this community. And that's not far-fetched because that's exactly what happened in the city of Exeter. And if you haven't had a chance to go out there, you should because it is a really nice community. And we actually have more of an advantage because of those four million visitors that go to Yosemite, they come through ninety-nine, not one forty, okay? And so, there's an opportunity for them to get off the freeway. And we're, we also made sure that there's parking for those tour buses on Wynton Parkway. So, we're doing all these different things to make sure that it's all tied together. Thank you, Jackie. There was one other thing, Jackie, that I was going to mention with regards to, you know, you heard tonight about the youth and, you know, we started this off back in twenty twelve, the chief, when we, when we wanted to get the cadet program going and explorer program going. So, youth to us is very important in this community. And I believe that that has played a major role in turning things around with gang activities and shootings that used to have in the past. So, one other recommendation that we would like to provide to council is to, you know, to empower youth and continue to get them to be engaged is as part of the Parks and Recreation Commission to actually have an open seat for the youth, you know, that they have to be enrolled in school and you guys can determine what the rules are and whether they can vote or not vote, you know, that, I'll leave it up to you. But I really do think that that would really be outstanding. And who knows, later on, that might be, you know, get them to be more engaged and participate in more city activities.
I think that's an excellent idea, thinking outside the box. And it gets an opportunity for the youth to get involved in the community and also the city. So, I think it's a great idea.
So, as part of, as part of looking at extending the term, incorporating some type of language, if you guys think it's a great idea?
Yeah, we probably would have to do an ordinance change, so.
It's still the, it's still part of the four-year...
So, we'll bring something to you.
Thank you, Jackie. Public works? Nothing? Fire department? Later, later.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of the community. My name is Barack Carter, Battalion Chief for Livingston Fire Department with our monthly report. So, this month, this report's for the time period of April first through April thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. For the city of Livingston, we ran fifty-eight medical aids, three of those were code blues, one vegetation fire, five vehicle accidents, one structure fire, four alarm soundings, two public assists. In the county areas, we ran twenty-six medical aids, two code blues, four vegetation fires, four vehicle, fourteen vehicle accidents, three vehicle fires, four structure fires, four debris fires, five alarm soundings, and two public assists. For total, our year-to-date total is five hundred and forty-seven calls, three hundred and thirty-three are in the city, two hundred and fourteen are in the county areas. We had seventy percent response from our PCFs. We had eight percent PCF coverage stationed while our resources were out. And eighty-five percent of the incidents were within our Livingston's initial attack area. So, that leaves us, fifteen percent of our call volumes, we're assisting the communities of Delhi, Bellico, Hillmar, and Stevenson. Our monthly training for our paid staff, we went over fire shelters and ropes and knots. A fire shelter is a device that our personnel will use as a emergency procedure whenever they're, they're going to be overrun by fire. They'll deploy the shelter and it's almost like a foil tent. And it prevents them, it blocks about ninety percent of radiant heat and it makes the environment survivable. So, we do this annually just to make sure that the individuals are proficient with this, in case they're out on emergency responses throughout the, throughout the state, that they understand how to utilize that equipment. And then for our volunteers, we did radio training because we have a new radio load that's coming out. So, we want to make sure that our personnel are proficient with communications. We also did some school presentations this month. We did fire awareness and prevention with the students. And as you can see, Captain Alves and Engineer Rodriguez are trying to recruit our next generation of firefighters. On April tenth, PCF Lance Nichols was nominated as the PCF Volunteer of the Year. They had the presentation in Merced at the Legion Hall. You can see PCF Nichols and the rest of the company there at the pitcher. We were also able to display our new engine that we took possession of for static display. And the volunteers had their annual pancake breakfast, which was a huge success. I'd like to take the time to thank the community for coming out, supporting us. And then also like to encourage the community to be part of the volunteer company. So, we're always accepting applications and we'll always have them down there available for anyone that's interested in becoming a volunteer, Livingston PCF. We did our annual Relay for Life, and this was the third annual fire truck pull. Every year it seems to get, we tend to get more and more teams that are participating in the event, but obviously, you know, Livingston was the champion. I think this is the third year in a row that they, they've brought home the trophy. So, there's some discussions as to try to manipulate the rules to give the other teams an advantage. We also had a booth set up at the kite festival. We're passing out fire prevention material as well as helmets and hats for the kids and coloring books and then talking about fire awareness. As Jackie spoke about earlier, so we have our Guns and Hoses softball game coming up May eighteenth at six P M. At the little guy and gals baseball field. Guarantee you that this year will be a different outcome.
Just a question. Do you guys have any wages on the side? I mean, like...
I'm sure there's something out there.
Like, for example, say, for some chance, fire department doesn't quite make it, you have to go wash all the police vehicles?
I'm sure there's some wages...
Or other way around, you know, so, maybe something can be worked out, you know?
We can come up with something. And then on May twenty-fifth, between eight A M. and two P M., we'll be doing our annual field of booth at Wynton Parkway and Joseph Gallop Drive. Last year, we were able to raise over three thousand dollars to go towards the MDA. And I think collectively throughout the area, we raised over twenty-five thousand dollars last year. So, this is a huge support. And we'll do this, it'll go basically countywide on this day here. And then lastly, we want to just make sure the community is aware of carbon dioxide poisoning, the signs and symptoms of it. And the only way to actually prevent carbon dioxide poisoning is to ensure that you have a carbon dioxide detector that's working. So, they're typically good for about seven years. So, we encourage the community to go out and look at the manufacture date. And if it's beyond that seven-year life expectancy, we encourage you to switch them out. And then lastly, I'd like to talk to the community, you know, a little bit about, we're starting to get in the point to where the weather's getting hotter and drier. So, we're starting to see an increase in grass fires. So, we just want to ensure that the public understands what that means is, you know, take the time to mow down their weeds, make sure that there's a good barrier between their fence line and the neighboring property. And then if they are going to mow their grass line, or the grass, try to do it early in the morning where, when it's not as hot and dry. End of report. Any questions?
Public, any questions for fire department? Counsel? If not, corporal, chief, take that back to the troops. Challenge been laid down. You're either washing fire trucks or they're washing the police vehicles.
Thank you.
All trucks. So, you guys, just remember a wax on, wax off, you know? Okay, I see the chief going on. Chief, you understood the challenge, right, chief?
Well, I was thinking about more like if we win, they cook us chili and if we win...
Get the cars washed.
Make them donuts or something. I don't know.
Perhaps they can wash the cars and put a donut in each one, you know, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, go ahead, chiefs.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, community. Ruben Chavez, Police Chief for Livingston P D. And it'll be in my, a quick report. And one thing before I forgot, I forgot to mention, I think Jackie talked about the color run. And I did that about five years ago in Merced and that was so much fun. It was so much fun. I would do it this year, but I'm not going to be around. But if you guys have a chance, there were volunteers, there was color everywhere. And by the time you're done with the run, it just, it was a great time. So, I'd encourage anybody that would be interested in having a lot of fun like that. Myself and Captain Sori attended the law enforcement executive development seminar down in Southern California. And it's a great opportunity to network with other executives, but also to see some programs that are on the... And it's a great opportunity to network with other executives, but also to see some programs that are on the forefront. And there's a new first responder drone program that just got deployed down in, I think it was Chula Vista. And there was some folks that put that, that developed that program, that gave a little demonstration on it. And it was pretty neat. And so we're looking at implementing something like that here in Livingston. They actually had a live demo where a person was picked out of the audience, and went up to the podium, and they were actually flying a drone live. And it is basically, you know, first responder, you get to the scene right away with live footage of the area. And one of the things they highlighted was a call where there was this violent, ongoing domestic violence issue, and they had no officers respond. Well, the drone got there and pretty much videotaped everything, and they were able to get some folks there and stop it. But a neat program, so look for that. We're working with some local businesses to help sponsor that program. One of the benefits was networking with the executive, which included the former Police Chief of Tijuana, Mexico, Alex Laris, and he's also a National Academy graduate. And we spoke with him, what a really neat guy. He talked about some of the things they're doing in Tijuana, and some of the things he implemented. But it's a great opportunity to network and have some relationships with some of our fellow colleagues from other countries. Congressman Jim Costa visited the city and visited the Police Department, and our explorers found out about that. There were some big, you know, fans of Congressman Costa, so they wanted to come and present him with a gift. And so he is a big fan of the explorers. And anytime he has a chance to thank them and recognize them, he does that. So we had several explorers meet with him, and then we had a chance to take a picture after with some folks, some of our department members and explorers and city manager. So it was a really, really good visit. I'm actually going to be going to the Police Officer Memorial in Washington, D.C. next week, and I'll be meeting with the congressman, and I think we're going to try to have lunch together. But it's, he's big supporter of our city. Our Easter egg hunt, Jackie coordinated the Easter egg hunt, and we had the Corporal, Officer Erickson, and then Officer Joe, I'm not sure which horse that is, he's got three of them. Was that Mo? Okay, that was Mo. And I told Joe, just make sure you don't step on any Easter eggs that are hidden in the grass. We don't want any kids crying because you stepped on the Easter egg, so... But... And it was a good event, and I think, I think he had a little, Mo had a little excitement with the Easter bunny, and wasn't sure how to take it, so... Again, as the city manager mentioned, we're, I mean, we've got a great explorer post here. We've got Officer Valdivia and a lot of the advisors. And so they're very active in the community. Here's fifty-one fifty boxing tournament. Officer Valdivia is training some of them on range. They do compete with other explorers throughout the Central Valley. And they've won first honors in the shooting competition over the last, I think, four or five years. So they do a good job with that. But again, something to get our kids involved in different programs. The Kite Festival. And then there were some promotions for some of our explorers, being promoted from Corporal to Sergeant, Sergeant to Lieutenant. And then some recognitions for some of those explorers who have been around. And you see them, you know who they are. I mean, there's some explorers that have given over a thousand hours a year in volunteering, and so... And they will be June, or I'm sorry, May... I think it's next, yeah, next week. The U.S. Open is going to be in Pebble Beach. And we'll have explorers, twenty explorers, working the entire week for the event. I'm sorry, not May, June, June seventh through the sixteenth, I believe. And it's going to be, it's going to be a very, very large event. If you didn't know, it'll be celebrating, the Pebble Beach's one-hundredth anniversary. And the U.S. Open, if you're not a golfer, it's like the Super Bowl of golf. And people come from all over, they expect at least fifty thousand visitors each day to that event. Then we had the dispatcher of the year luncheon held by the Elks Lodge on the eighteenth. And Deanna Eldridge was a recipient. And so a very, very nice luncheon for Deanna and all the other dispatchers that do a lot of great things here in our county. And then Officer of the Year was Corporal Nick Kirk. And that was also at the Elks Lodge, however, this one was a dinner. And there's our mayor helping give out our award to Corporal Kirk. And it was a very, very nice meal. They put together a first-class event. On the horizon, so kind of mentioned a couple of things. One of the things I forgot to, well, it came to me late, but we're going to have Coffee with the Cop on May twenty-ninth, on a Wednesday, at Starbucks from nine to eleven in the morning. Coffee with Cop, we've had it once before, but we'll have officers out there talking to the community and serving coffee. About, I want to say maybe twenty years ago, we had a trading card program. And so with the assistance of the mayor and city manager, we were able to get that program kicked off again. And we're going to be having these officers' trading cards manufactured with their picture and a little bio, and some slogans that we can pass out to the community. Also, a while ago, we actually had a bike unit, bike patrol unit, where the officers would patrol on bicycles, mountain bikes. We haven't had that for a while. And so Officer Jeff Godfrey is actually putting together both of these events. He's the lead, will be the lead instructor on the bicycles. He's a trained officer now, but he's going to be taking the Train the Trainer course and training the members from our department. And we'll, you'll see them out there at different events. And that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Public, any questions or chief? Counsel? Thank you, chief.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I don't see anybody else left from the staff, so Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, and Public. There's a few things that I want to cover. The first thing is, we've been talking about, we've been talking about this for a while, actually. The itinerant vendor ordinance needs to be updated. We continuously have problems with it, so we've engaged our legal counsel, and we're going to be working with their team to address this and come back to council. And hopefully, we can make it a lot more friendlier and more easier to interpret and move forward with that. Also, we, as you know, part of our long-term plan is to have access to surface water, not only for our parks, but also for our potable drinking water system. And so we've already received an MOU from Merced Irrigation that we're looking at. And we hope to, we hope to address, bring that before council in the very near future. I made sure that the council received the succession plan that our department, Police Department, has been working on. So you guys take a look at it. If you guys have any questions, please let me know. And we'll talk more about the Prop sixty-eight, because we covered that through Jackie. And so we have another workshop coming, so if you guys are all invited. And I forgot to ask the Police, or Fire Chief about the Type Six, and when that unit's going to be on call and ready to respond.
So currently, we have some items that have been purchased, and they're still in route. And then the builder has some minor adjustments that they need to make. But I'm shooting for June first, which will be ideal, just because things are getting hotter and drier. So with all the grass curing, that'd be a perfect time for it to be put in service. So my goal is by June first.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And the last item that I have is, there's, off of Hammett and F Street, there's a multifamily housing project that is in the wing. And you might know that we have a well that's actually been abandoned for a while. So we are interested, the party that owns the property around the abandoned well is interested in purchasing the well site and fully develop that whole area. So we went ahead and had an appraisal done on the property. The appraisal has actually come back. And we are going to be looking at negotiating with the interested party and go from there. So again, the appraisal's been completed, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and going on to Councilmember Announcements and Reports. Councilmember Baptista, I got it right? Comments? Nothing? I know Councilmember Egler's got a whole bunch of things to report, so please do so.
First, I just want to say thank you to the community and everybody that attended the annual pancake breakfast from the Fire Department. It's something I put together every year, and it's very nice to see the community go out and have breakfast and support a good cause for much-needed supplies for the Fire Department. So thank you, everybody. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Garcia for attending as well, appreciate it. And you went too, huh? Yeah, Ms. Maria here. So thank you, everybody that attended. Another thing, last week, we spent a week in Washington, D.C., myself with Mr. Garcia, for the One Voice trip, advocating for our city. We met with different agencies, different officials. Overall, I think it was a very successful trip. We were to meet with USDA, for example, FEMA, Veteran Affairs, and other agencies. Overall, I think we were successful in advocating, and also getting some information for much-needed grants and other funding sources. So Mr. Garcia will probably talk a little bit more about it, a little bit. But I also attended last night the twenty-nineteen Senior Scholarship gathering yesterday at the Livingston High School, and presented on behalf of the City of Livingston Recreation Arts Commission Scholarship to Alexis Gonzalez, and also on behalf of MCAG, the Ana Maria Fuentes Scholarship to Rima Chaudry. So congratulations to both ladies, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Egler. Councilmember King?
Yeah, I got nothing to report right now.
Sorry?
I got nothing to report.
Do you wish to introduce some guests in the audience?
Yeah, my uncle, he just came from India to visit right there. His name is Jagru Singh. He's right in the middle.
Who's that person? His dad?
Yeah, he already introduced his dad. His uncle just came from India. So here's a guy that flew halfway across the world to attend a council meeting. We're honored. We are very honored. Maybe he'll take this as an example of how the democracy works here, you know? And it's a different form of government, so, you know? So Mayor Protem?
Yeah, like Mr. Egilar said, we went to Washington, D.C. I believe it was a great outcome for not just Livingston, but the Merced County. And I was on a strike team, while we were all on a strike team, I was on number three. And I concentrated more on homelessness and veterans. So there's a lot of programs out there for veterans. If you guys know anybody that needs any kind of assistance, feel free to give me a call at the city, and I'll give them or send them down the right direction. And so there's a lot of programs that are going to be coming out that we found out about, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem. For me, I'm glad, just picking back on your trip to, for the One Voice, I'm sure it was a great experience, and you came back with a lot of good information. And I think that's why I always advocated that we always participate in the One Voice program. It is a great program. So for me, I had other items, but they've already been addressed, about the Type Six. I know that I saw it, no, I know it's already been addressed, so it's okay, chief. So it was sitting there with the low air, so it needs new rims, so... Something like that, I understand, you know? So I just want to get out in that field so we can make some money off of that darn thing, you know? I'm sorry, I always think I think of revenue, you know, so... And then again, I'm looking forward to our color run on the fifteenth, and our game. I'm looking forward to it, so, I mean, I'm going to see how it turns out, you know, so... Because last time I shamed the heck out of the people that lost, I won't mention the name this time. So let's hope we don't have to go through this again, so... So with that, moving on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows a member of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public who recognize the mayor should come forward to the electoral and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with the state open meetings, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion. Citizens' comments?
Good evening, City Council, City Manager, and Community. My name is Jose Moran, nine forty-five Parkview Drive, Livingston, California. And today, one of the hats that I'm wearing is, I'm here to also invite the council and the city manager and the community to the first pet festival. Yes, the first pet festival is going to happen here in Livingston on May twenty-third, along with the farmer's market. We're very excited. So we're really putting this together. We've been working on it for about, almost a year. There's a lot of planning behind it, and obviously with the support of the city. And this is finally happening, happening, happening on May twenty-third from five to nine. We're going to have actually the Merced County Animal Shelter here, and a couple of other agencies are going to be providing a lot of information on how to care for our pets. And more than anything, it's, the goal is to eventually have and drastically reduce our homeless pet population here in Livingston, which in long term will save money to the city and the county. So we're really excited, and we're hoping to see all of you guys there and invite the community. And I know that this is going to be very interesting, because I already had a couple of other cities that are asking about more information about this program. And first, we want to do it in Livingston and set the example. And we want to see this be more successful and grow it from there. And then I'm going to go ahead and leave a few flyers for you guys to also visit our website and share the information with our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Does anybody else wish to come forward at this time? If not, the citizens' comment portion is now closed. Moving on to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered routine and non-controversial will be enacted by one vote, unless a separate action is requested by city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or city manager requests a specific item be removed. The council, does anybody wish to pull any item for discussion? We have three items. Approve the minutes of meeting held on March nineteen, twenty nineteen. Prove the warrant registered dated May second, twenty nineteen. Second reading adoption of the ordinance number six thirty-eight, ordinance of the city council. City of Livingston acting in its capacity as a legislative body, the City of Livingston Community Facility District number twenty seventeen, Dash One Public Services, authorize this levy of special taxes. Let me ask again, does anybody wish to pull, I didn't introduce the items, so... Anybody wish to discuss any items? Okay, if not, then I will entertain a motion at this time. Does anybody wish to make a motion?
A motion.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem. Do I have a second? Don't be shy.
I second it.
There you go. Second by Councilmember Baptista. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Egilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to discussion and potential action items. This is the number eight, Resolution Number twenty nineteen, authorizing city manager to sign a letter of commitment... authorizing city manager to sign a letter of commitment with Train Building Advantage and the City of Livingston to enter into detailed engineering phase for the Train Comprehensive Solution Project. Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council and public. As you know, we've been down this path for, uh, several months. And, um, I'm happy to report that, um, the, the utility stakeholders committee has a recommendation before council to move forward with Train. But before I do that, uh, just so that, uh, the public kind of, you know, put all the different pieces together. Um, it was in 2018 that we went out for an RFP to do a comprehensive, uh, water and energy, um, RFP so that we can look at where can we save money in the city, uh, what, what's out there. So, we basically did a, uh, an energy assessment and, uh, we went through this, this whole process, uh, as part of the RFP. And we had four firms that actually submitted an RFP. Uh, we actually, because this is an area that we have very little expertise and it's a, it's a very complicated area, we actually hired an owner representative, in this case was Naresco. And Naresco, uh, um, who was not part of the, uh, the four who submitted as part of the RFP, helped us actually go through this process of identifying the, the best, most responsive and, and, uh, and, um, with, with the most experience in terms of this field. So, what came out of that was council selecting Train. And we do have Reggie here, Ingram, who's, who's one of our representatives for Train. And so, once we've done that, they had to go through, you know, look, actually put together some performance for us to actually look and see, uh, where is it that we can actually save money and, and we asked them to break it up into different funding sources. So, we have the general, we have the, the general fund, and then we have the, uh, Water Operations Fund, and then we have the wastewater, uh, operations fund. So, after going through this quite extensively with our utility stakeholders and staff, uh, we've come to, uh, the realization that the best course of action at this point is to go to, uh, looking at signing a letter of commitment to do an investment-grade audit with Train for two out of the three, uh, categories that we have identified. So, those two categories that we're recommending to council tonight is the, uh, general fund, uh, and the Water Operations Fund. Uh, we looked at the numbers, we looked at the performer, we looked at the return of our investment, and so on. One, it's about 1.5, the other one's about 2-point something. And on the wastewater side, uh, we, we feel that, uh, we need to work on that a little bit further. And at this point, um, even though the numbers look good over the course of 20 years, we would like to see the ROI be, you know, less years. So, we want to put that, uh, to the side and, and, and move, take advantage of these other two. So, what we're asking council tonight is to give us authorization to enter into a, uh, uh, sign a letter of commitment with Train to do an investment-grade audit. It, there's a, there's a hundred, if, if we decide to back out of this and they do all of this work, we're talking about $118,000 that we would have to pay. Uh, however, if all the projects that are brought forward, uh, everything moves forward, that money is actually incorporated into the overall, uh, project costs and we move forward. Of course, we, as a municipality, want to have all the savings possible because that has a direct impact across all city funds, whether it's general fund or the operations fund. On the op, on the enterprise funds, that will help us, you know, uh, save money in, in those areas and therefore, uh, the, the, the rate increases won't be as impactful. So, again, if you look at your packet, um, you will have a, a spreadsheet, and I just want to go over those numbers real quick. Uh, let's see, where is that? Sorry about that. Here we go. So, I just want to talk about those real quick. So, under the, uh, general fund, we're looking at 1.5 million, uh, and under the, uh, Water Operations Fund, we're looking at about 2 million, so. Right, that, that, that's, that's a great savings in our, our ROI. So, again, uh, council, if you have any questions, please ask. But we are recommending that we move forward with, uh, in the utility stakeholders, that we move forward with the general fund and the Water Operations Fund and not the Wastewater Operations Fund.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a representative from Train?
Uh, yes, he's here in the audience.
Okay, uh, and, uh, the person who wished to make comment, they may do so. Uh, when they do, if they do, or somebody can answer. If you look at, uh, under detailed results of the added series considered, uh, I have a question on item number two. It says, "City to pay for any engineering or project management cost." Uh, I read the whole thing, but is there a limit to how much it will be? I just want to make sure that, that we understand that there is.
Yeah, that, that-
I know you mentioned a number, but I want to make sure that-
Yeah, yeah, he can-
That total engineering, everything does not go above a certain limit. So, please, sir.
Certainly. Um, you see, the, uh, there's, I believe in your packet is, uh, um, a list of, of, uh, costs that, that ma- that, that may be incurred, um, that equal that $118,000. So, that is the cap of $118,000. And I want to be clear on that. We go all the way through the investment-grade audit and we've spent engineering costs, we've spent a lot of those things, and you guys, and the, and the council, uh, and the city does not go forward. That's the only time that you'll see those $118,000, um, charges. If you go forward with the project, we wrap those in to the, uh, actual project. So, this is not out of pocket at all to the, to the, uh, the City of Livingston. I will mention one other, um, thing that could happen. And that-
Bless you.
And that is, if the cost of the facility improvement measures that we have articulated in our report is greater than 20%, uh, 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 an additional 20% of that, um, of that $2.6 million that is articulated in the document itself, then the City of Livingston is under no obligation to pay for even the, the, the investment-grade audit. Also, if we are 20% less than, and I believe the number, um, in there is about $264,000 in annual savings, if we, through this investment-grade audit, we find that that's not the case and that we can't, um, uh, that we, that, that that's not the case, then, once again, the City of Livingston is not, um, uh, under any obligation to pay, if you walked away.
Yeah, I read that and I understand it, but it was just like, this kind of stood out there. I was wanting to make sure that we have it on the record that at no time will it go over that limit that we have, you know, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
You know, I just want to make sure it's on the record. I read the whole thing, you know?
Yeah.
I see it there, too.
No problem.
But this was like, just kind of glared at me, you know?
Yeah, not a problem. 118, it's on the record, $118,000 for the investment-grade audit. I know, under the worst-case scenario is that-
Okay.
We go all the way through there and you say, "No, I, we don't want to do it."
All right. Thank you. Uh, this item is open to the public. Does anybody wish to come forward? If not, it is now closed to the public. Uh, Councilmember Baptista? Comments are?
No, not responding.
Okay, then, uh, to me, I have been looking through this for a while and I'm not, can't find anywhere where you can lose on this. You know, I mean, I think it's, I couldn't find anywhere to lose other than that thing that kind of glared at me, but maybe I'm just overly cautious. So, if there's no, uh, Mr. Attorney?
Just, just have one request to change to the resolution, Mayor. If on number, now their 4B had resolved on the first page, number two, at the end, if we could just add in a form approved by the city attorney, just so we could give the, uh, the letter, number two, under the resolution itself. I just wanted to add in a form approved by the city attorney.
After the form approval, okay.
Therefore, we could just give, give the letter, uh, one more look in case there's minor edits. We could go ahead and make those, uh, those edits.
Okay. So, council, uh, any, any further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion at this time?
Uh, make the motion for Resolution Number 2019, authorized to the city manager to sign the letter of commitment with Train Building Advantage and the City of Livingston to enter into a detailed engineering phase for Train Comprehensive Solutions Project.
Is that as amended, sir? Is that as amended? Okay, just make sure we understand it's as amended. I have a motion by Mayor Protem. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Uh, second by Councilmember King. May I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Baptista?
Yes.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I just wanted to make one, one, one comment, Mr. Mayor. Of course, Reggie and his team understands the, the urgency now that the council's given the green light to move forward. Summer's around the corner. And the AC units around here are, you know, 35 years or more older and, uh, that, some of them have some Band-Aids on them already and s- some super glue, but it, so, uh, I know that in, in, in here, you talk about up to 120 days, but be assured that on our end, whatever you need from the city, we will do everything that we can to move things ahead so that we can crunch, so we can close the window on that a little, to get things done, so.
It is our, um, desire to do so as well, so, I'm, uh, mobilizing. As soon as I get a signed document from you guys, I'll mobilize it immediately.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, moving on to the last item. This is a resolution, appointing a second alternate member to the planning commission. I don't see Mr. Hatch in the audience or Mr. Ramirez? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, before we do, does anybody wish to recuse themselves?
Yes, I have one of the candidates, my brother. I have no conflict in anything, so I would just like to excuse myself.
Okay, uh, for the record, uh, Councilmember King, uh, regardless of the conflict of interest, still wish to recuse himself for sake of appearance.
And, and if I may just add a little more clarity, um, as far as this item, Councilmember King does not have any financial interest under the Political Reform Act or Section 1090. His recusal is merely for perception purposes, just to avoid any issues of, of, any perception issues here.
So, please note that at 8:57, Mr. King has left the dais. Okay, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. It was the council's prerogative, uh, a few meetings ago, that in order to help facilitate the meetings for our planning commission, that we actually add a second alternate on the planning commission. And, uh, so, so staff went ahead and, um, provided the, uh, went ahead and advertised for the, these positions and it's council's, uh, uh, prerogative to identify anybody from the applicants to be part of the planning commission. So, at this time, um, you can decide.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and I will, uh, bring it. Uh, first of all, I'll take it to the public. Does anybody wish to make a comment on this item? No? And then, uh, second, or all, I believe there were, uh, four applicants, Mr. Blemmons, Mr. King, Mr. Moran, and Renee Waite. Uh, is everybody in the audience? Okay, thank you. And, uh, council, uh, we can interview or we can just make motions. What is, what is the pleasure of the council at this time? Do you wish for everybody to introduce themselves? I'm a, I'm asking for consensus here, so, there's no really rule to it other than, you know?
Sure.
So, what, okay, well, let's just go ahead and start out with, uh, each applicant, introduce themselves. Give yourself a couple of minutes to come forward and, uh, state your name and address for the record and why you wish to be on here. Uh, so, let me call, Mr. Blemmons, do you, or, okay, Mr., go ahead, Mr. King. Yeah?
Walt Pinder King, 657 Clara Court. Um, I've been living in the city since 92. Been employed by the city since 2011. As most of you guys might be aware, that I was honored to win a council election in 2016, which there was some conflict interest, so, I'm just trying to give the citizens that voted for me an opportunity for me to represent them and being involved in the planning commission is something that I'm allowed to do. Sweet and simple.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, any, anybody else wish to come forward and introduce themselves?
Hello, I'm Renee Waite. I, let's see, where do I start? I was born and raised in Livingston. Um, my family has been in the area for 80 years or more. Um, my grandfather started leveling land here in Livingston. I came from, at the time, a very prominent family here in Livingston, the Garcias. My, um, Uncle Loopy was mayor at one time. Um, and, um, I have, I now work for Wynton Ireland Strom and Green, um, and have for the past 15 years, 10, 15 years. I did some work before I actually became an employee with them. Left Livingston for about 30 years where we were business owners in Merced. We own Merced Tire Company. We rekept truck tires, my husband and I, very involved in the city, um, and some of the planning down 16th Street because that's where I still own four commercial buildings. Came back to Livingston once my husband passed away because my heart's always been in Livingston. I love to give back to the community. When I moved back, I love to make sure that I, um, purchased things from the City of Livingston. My money's spent in the City of Livingston. And again, this, applying for this position is kind of giving my, um, giving part of me back to the city that's given so much to me. So, that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening again, uh, Jose Moran, 945 Parkview Drive, Livingston, California. I've been part of this community for, on and off, for at least 22 years. I've been married to my wife. She was raised here in Livingston. Uh, we've been married for over 20 years. And, you know, although at that time I wasn't living here, but we were spending a lot of time here. Ever since, Livingston has grown in me and I always keep on coming back. Now that I have, that we're back in Livingston, we're basically living in Livingston again. It's like, even when I, when I wasn't here, um, we were doing a lot of activities here with our kids. Our, our kids have been raised here. They've been going through the school system here in Livingston. My wife teaches here in Livingston. Uh, we all volunteer here in Livingston. Um, I currently don't work in Livingston, but I still volunteer here at the high school at the, and, uh, I mentor some students, uh, here in Livingston. And every opportunity that I can have to volunteer, I rescue cats here in Livingston. I feed the homeless cats here in Livingston. They're not mine, they're some, they're everybody's, but I still, uh, go out every night and feed them. I take them to the hospital. I spend a lot more money on those cats than, than on my kids sometimes. But, you know, it's, I, uh, this is just another opportunity for me to continue serving, uh, the community and, and the City of Livingston. And anywhere I go, I, you know, we all take our, uh, we're very proud to say that, uh, we're, we're part of Livingston. And this is just another opportunity for, for me to give, give back and, and to model- And this is just another opportunity for, for me to give, get back and, and to model. I'm always modeling to other kids in the community how, how to serve and what best model to do in order to see them as serving in another, in another, in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Blamens, ten nineteen Fourth Street. I've applied for planning commission. I've served on it before in the past.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Sure. I've, I've, I've served on the planning commission before, so I have the experience. I've served on the recreation commission. I currently coach Little League baseball, so I'm very community-involved. I worked here for thirty years, I managed a grocery store before it closed down. So, now, we need more businesses in town, so I'd like to help see that come to fruition. I attend the, the planning commission meetings now as it is, so I will be there if you guys choose me, and if you don't, I'll be there anyway. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we have now heard from our four people that it's amended. This item is now, coming back to the council. Council, any discussion?
No discussion, but I just wanna say thank you, everybody, for being willing to participate and get involved in your community through this opportunity. With that said, I would like to nominate Wapender Kang as the second alternate.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, Wapender Kang. Do I have a second? I will second that. And then, may I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, councilmember Baptista.
No.
Councilmember Aguilar. Mayor Pro Tem Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Samra.
Yes.
And just for the record, the, the motion was to adopt the resolution, filling in the, the blank there with Mr. Wapender Kang's name.
Motion approved.
I'm sorry, what was the, I was, what was the count on it?
It was three, three yes and one no.
And?
And one abstain.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion passed three to one. Okay, count, can we please bring in Mr. McCang now? Leave him out there? Things go better when he's out. Just, when, when is our next planning commission meeting?
Next, it's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? So, Mr. McCang, our next planning commission meeting is next Tuesday. So, before that, we'd like to set up time to swear you in. We're not gonna have time to do it publicly at this time, so we'll do a ceremonial swearing at our next council meeting, but this way it makes you eligible to attend at the next meeting if so needed, okay? What's, city manager be contacting you for that oath, okay?
And I, I just wanted to personally thank all of the individuals who applied for this position. I am, have no doubt in my mind that you're all qualified. It's great to have a lot of interest. I hope that you guys continue to put in because there, there'll be, there are always gonna be opportunities and whether it's planning commission, recreation or others. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, and, and I want to echo that, just because you're not on the planning commission doesn't mean you don't participate. Mr. Moran, you do so much for the community. I call on you all the time and we're gonna find other places to work with you and, and I know you already work with the city. Mr. Blamens, you've been involved and everybody's been involved, so there are other places to participate. This is an alternate position, so please keep an eye out. We can always use help on recreation and other places as well.
Yeah, same thing, I just wanna echo that. Mr. Jose Moran, I know you're heavily involved in the community and I'm very proud of what you've done, you know, to bring new ideas and new events. So, like, you know, we have set up here, you know, there's other opportunities, there's a rec commission, obviously with your pet fest, is it Pet Fest coming up, festival? Pet Fest, twenty nineteen, coming up. You know, there's other opportunities too. Mr. Blamens, same thing, I know you're heavily involved in the community and you have been for many years, so don't let this discourage you in, in still being involved in your community. Obviously, as a council, we recognize everything you do and we're very proud of, of you guys and, and what you guys are doing, okay?
Thank you. Council, any further business? If not, there will be, we'll not have a council meeting in, on the, the twenty-first. Some of our members will be, going to work hard for the city at a, at a retail conference trying to bring in businesses. So, because that, we wanna have it, so we will have our meeting in June. So, with that, if there's been no further business, we are in enjoyment. Thank you very much.